I'm going to call this meeting the Buchanan City Council Board, remind it's deeper in here. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome here to Buchanan City Council. It's a pleasure to have all of you here as well. I'm really glad to see our Vips here with us tonight. We'll get you guys here in a few moments. As we normally do, as we always do at the beginning of our council sessions, we shall have a moment of silent prayer and meditation, and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I love how everybody can break the weather or not to be with us just before the end of the year. This is the last council session of 2015. It's been a good year, and I'm looking forward to getting through with this one and moving on to 2016. I do not see anyone that has signed up.
Public hearing first, ma'am.
Oh, that's right. We have a public hearing, which I probably should not have done the call to order first for. Public hearing for ordinance 398, International Property Maintenance Code. As you may recall, oh, well, I'll ask, does anybody in the audience, do we have any citizens that wish to speak for or against ordinance 398 of the International Property Maintenance Code? I'll ask one more time, do we have any citizens for or against the Property Maintenance Code, ordinance 398? Hearing none, then I will close the public hearing for ordinance 398 on the International Property Maintenance Code and move on to our agenda. I do not see any recognized guests, anybody that signed up did not ask to speak as well. So we will move straight into our Department and Board reports. Mr. Doss, City Administrator.
Yes, I have actually three items tonight for the end of the year meeting. You do have in front of you the financial report, ending November 30th, 2015. Our overall revenues to this point are $1,733,545.20. For the year to date, we have expended $1,769,395.15, which is actually a negative expenditures over revenues of $35,849.95. And again, I've alluded to this in the past. We've actually done a lot of projects in the front part of the fiscal year. I do anticipate that we'll catch up. Our revenues will certainly exceed our expenditures barring any emergency situations for the second half of the fiscal year, and especially since we're dying down in project season. But, you know, we got 92,000, 93,000 in paving projects that we've done, of course, the parking lots. So we've had some significant expenditures during this first half of fiscal year. So I'm not terribly concerned with that amount. And, you know, we did agree when we were doing the budget that we would be expending some capital from our carryover in this fiscal year. So that's just reflective of that as well. If you turn your packet, you will also see an advertisement, and kind of job description, if you will, for the City of Buchanan Municipal Court Judge. The last council meeting council charged me with creating a statement of qualifications advertisement so we could start soliciting for our municipal court judge. And the final product is what you see in front of you. Again, a lot of this was pulled away from the West Virginia State Code and our local ordinance as it relates to the establishment of municipal court and the municipal court judge. So a lot of what you're seeing here is based off of written law and ordinance form. What I'd like to do is get that approved through council. We'll give you an opportunity to look at that so we can start to advertise statements of qualification for our municipal court judge. I'll remind you that our municipal court judge, Randy Levine, is set to leave us January 31st, 2016, which isn't that far from now. So it would really be to kind of maintain the continuity and the consistency of the municipal court and then the violations and penalties that we have with parking enforcement in particular. It would be important, critical to get through this process, start to advertise so council and the mayor can get candidates in front of you for consideration for appointments to municipal court judge. So that's all I have at this point to get approved. Well, I have a couple other items, but if council will approve that, you know, we can move that along.
First of all, we got any questions on Mr. Doss's report as far as the revenue, financial report? Questions, comments? All righty then, we'll move on to the second part of Mr. Doss's presentation, and that is, the report is the statement of qualifications. Does council feel like it has enough opportunity to look at this job description or the advertisement to make a motion now?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Who determines what the hours of the judge are? Is that council, the judge, or who?
That's going to be council. Currently, Mr. Levine works every Friday, usually comes in around noon, stays till 4:30, sometimes five, sometimes a little over. He definitely stays till the office hours are complete and office staff go home. That would be something to talk to the individuals who submit SOQs, statements of qualification. And this process will be very similar to the process we did when we hired Mr. McClure as selection of city attorney. But it's something that council will set and determine in working with whoever's appointed judge about the hours that they would stay. I would hope that there would be some consistency in the hours. You know, that someone is coming in on a specific day at a specific time because it really helps us from an administrative standpoint. When people call and inquire about paying fines or wanting to see the judge, and we have a definitive time that that individual is in office. But council will set that.
One other question, please.
And that's been going on for how long now, exactly, on Fridays and?
Years.
Years and years. So there has not been any problems with the time zones, the dates of the week, blah, blah, blah? We haven't had any issues with that?
I think it's worked out with Randy and the other.
I thought as much, I just wanted to make sure.
They've honed it down to a very efficient system.
Yes.
And for us to be able to, or for us to suggest that they start changing that up would have to take some real consideration, not only just on our part, having a judge or whoever that candidate is, but also administratively. Because now you're looking at changing schedules for perhaps whoever that administration person is, in this case is Teresa.
Right.
To change up her schedule.
Her whole schedule, it was her days dedicated to that.
But from what I do understand, it is up to the judge though ultimately to set. We would set a certain criteria of how many hours. And at this point, he's at 20 hours on a, does he have a certain minimum amount of hours he works?
He's usually four to five hours.
Is it stated or written?
I don't believe.
He doesn't do a timesheet?
No, ma'am.
Right. So you're looking at what, that's about five hours, six hours per week, times four, 24 hours.
I do want to reference something that's kind of unique and brought out in ordinance, but according to our ordinance, the individual who is appointed municipal court judge must at the time of appointment be a resident of the City of Buchanan and must maintain that residency throughout his or her appointment as municipal judge. So. Little niche in the ordinance.
Is that by ordinance or by charge?
It's by ordinance. We get to amend that.
You can amend that, I love that.
I don't know, he wants to.
At some point, you're right.
And this is the first time, well, in how many years we've even had to look at any municipal judge?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or concerns? What's the pleasure of the council?
I say we go for it. I'll make that motion if you need a motion.
That's a formal motion to allow, to accept Mr. Doss's letter of advertisement for statements of qualifications to be advertised when, Mr. Doss?
Yeah, it would be immediate. I do have, and this advertisement was council, otherwise does not want it. The close of business by January 8th, that would be the day after the council meeting on the 7th, but would give council members an opportunity to take a look at the SOQs and then hopefully we can have some interviews set up closer to the second meeting in January.
So roughly three weeks to be able to get anything. So I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Pew. Any discussions or questions or comments on that? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries.
I got a couple other items just to order. Just want to let you know that we are ending, obviously, the calendar year. We're halfway through our fiscal year. Beginning in January, the next time we meet, but before we meet, I'll actually be sending out budget worksheets at this time of the year. This is the first stage of the process of the budget process for the City of Buchanan and the state of West Virginia. Budget worksheets will basically be disseminated to all the department heads within General Fund. We usually give them a couple of weeks to fill those out and submit them back. And those will be their request for fiscal year 2016, '17. Of course, once we review those, we'll meet with the department heads and then we'll meet with council and discuss their requisitions. And then finally, I'm not sure if anyone's going to report this, but we did have a fire committee meeting today at 5:30. And the committee went through 29 complete applications, 29 complete applications. And they have pulled out their kind of top 10, if you will. And we will be doing some kind of preliminary phone interviews with these individuals, kind of the first phase of the screening process. With the holidays coming up, it's going to be a little scattered. But hopefully I can have something to report back to the committee and to council as a whole. I'm hoping by the first meeting in January, that process. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Doss. Any questions, comments for Mr. Doss? Thank you, Mr. Doss, we appreciate all your work. Chief Gregory, Police Department.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
I have a few things to add to report on. But first, I'd like to start out with recognizing the good folks that took the time out of their evening, this evening, to be with us, and that's our volunteer officers who have been with us for the last year. And if I could, just talk a little bit about how they've helped us over the last year. And then I'd like to call them up, a mayor individually, if you'd like to.
Absolutely.
Give them certificates for their service. These folks that have gathered here tonight are volunteers in police service, and they've dedicated a large portion of their time over the past year, whatever year, actually. But this is the first full calendar year that they've been with us, helping us with a large number of activities. Just to name a few things that they've helped us out with throughout the year of 2015. Every parade that we've had in the City of Buchanan, they've helped with traffic control and crowd patrol, assisting officers with these various traffic duties. They've helped out with a large number of special events, pretty much every special event that this community has had during 2015. I want to name just a few, I'll probably miss some of the events they've helped us with, but forgive me if I do. Some of the larger ones was the barbecue bash. They helped with National Night Out, tremendous asset with that. The car shows that we've had throughout our community. They've been a presence at festival Fridays. They've helped out with a variety of 5Ks and different other programs where our streets and roads are shut now. They've helped us out with special educational programs everywhere from our elementary schools to college programs and everything in between. They went hand in hand with officers. They went by themselves to a variety of programs when officers couldn't make it. And they went and represented us, represented us quite well at these events. They've helped out with a variety of administrative tasks around the office. They've come and helped out with some paperwork and some reports, statistical reports that we do, our monthly reports and things like that. They've helped out when, one particular time, just this past October, we had several burglary cases that we were investigating. And Doug Allen and I really had our hands full with processing the individuals we'd arrested for this and getting everybody's statements and everything together. And so Vips were able to help us with fingerprinting and different processing type activities as well. They do have regular meetings. They meet twice a month and are very consistent with that throughout the year. They also participate in ride-alongs and are available to go on with the officers to help out with different, again, non-enforcement field-related tasks. Something new that they've started is security checks. They took it upon themselves to revamp kind of our registry of businesses here in the city. They've done a fine job with that, putting that together. And now they're actually going out and helping us check those businesses at night for their security and making sure that there's nothing amiss with those. So as you can see, it's a large variety of things that they've really assisted us with, and they're truly an asset. I really don't know what we would have done this year without them. You know, I've talked before, before the implementation of our volunteer program, how a lot of these situations, we just spin our wheels just because we have, you know, just manpower issues and happened to be several different places at once. And they're truly a godsend, and they've helped us out tremendously. These folks that you see sitting here tonight, we have everybody present except one. We're dismissing one individual who's currently active. But all told, throughout the year 2015, they have logged an impressive 1,237 and a half hours of volunteer work throughout this year. If you take that even at the base rate of what we pay our patrolmen, they have saved the city over $18,000 in the time that they have put in and helped us out. So they're, you know, I feel like I wanted to recognize them publicly. I've got a certificate to recognize their service, but that doesn't even hold a candle to what they've given back to our community. You know, so, you know, words aren't enough. Thank you just doesn't seem to be enough to say, you know, how much of an asset you guys really are to our community. We'll say that each of these folks have individually logged between 100 and 200 hours each going toward this total. But I would like to point out the individual that has the highest amount of hours, and that's Mr. Rowan. David Rowan has 332 hours. And so he led the pack, and so I just want to recognize him for that.
You didn't mention 4th of July again, I had.
Yeah, see, I knew I'd missed something. You know, they've helped us with just about every event that this community has had.
Strawberry Festival, too, right?
Yeah, well, I kind of lumped that into the parades, but yeah, they've been, you know, it's more than just the parade, really.
Oh, yes.
It's good that you bring that up. They help us with crowd patrol and being a presence out at the different events, the street parties. So, you know, it's not just them standing and directing traffic and going home. You know, they, a lot of these folks log in just as many hours as the police officers do during that time.
And crazy people jumping in the river.
Yeah, 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 that's the poor point.
How many persons were involved in that?
We had a total, we have five with us now, six are currently active, but there's been eight that have participated in the program on and off. We've had a couple that have had to leave. One individual took a job at the southern end of the state. Another individual has another job here locally and is just unable to volunteer like he was prior to getting that job. But we've had a total of eight.
When's it rolling again for this program?
Open right now. Yeah, it's open right now. If the press could help me facilitate that, you know, we're happy to accept anybody who is willing to give back to their community that has a bona fide interest in not just the community, but the police department here in our community and wants to give back and be a part of something great. We extend our wholehearted invitation to those folks.
How many other municipalities do you have?
There's a handful that's out there. The, obviously, the Sheriff's Department has the Reserve Deputy Program, and that's fairly similar. However, our Vips are much more active than what the reserves have been lately. Reserves still do help us with traffic control parades. But our Vips are, like I said, they're involved in any event that comes up. They're very noticeable. There are other municipalities close to us, such as Bridgeport, that has a Vips program. That ours is probably the closest model, too, I would think, in terms of activities.
Man, I personally observed a couple of your Vips members helping out the officers and everything in crowd control. But it's basically, remember one night, maybe it was the car show or the barbecue, I'm not sure which, but, or one of the officers was in a little bit of problems with the person. And I saw Mr. Rowan go instead. He didn't get involved, but he was there in case he needed him. And that's entirely the role that these gentlemen and ladies are supposed to be picking up.
Yeah.
And I highly commend them. And if I were you, I'd just take all five of those people, put them on as your new man and save some money.
That'd be all right. They are an asset. What I'd like to do at this time, if I could, I've got certificates for each of them. Would you like, I'll call the names.
Yeah, let me say a couple things though before you do, Matt. I can't tell you, first of all, I commend your department for the Vips program and the years that you've been doing it, but I can't say enough about the individuals. I've had an opportunity, I think, to see each one of you while you're doing your roles, and we've been ragged and had a good time. You guys do are ambassadors to the city. When you're out there in your uniforms, you are great ambassadors for our city, and you make us look good. Mr. Rowan, I know that, I can personally say, I know for a fact that because you're down there and the Vips are down there, vandalism at John Bone Park has dramatically decreased. It's because of your presence down there and the concern that if they do anything wrong down there, they could be seen. So thank you very much for that as well. I would be happy to, what I would ask then is when you get your certificate, if you would, come stand up behind council and we'll get a picture afterwards so we have all this support, of course, you too.
So, however you want to proceed. Let's do it.
David Rowan.
There you go, congratulations.
Joel Fisher.
I want to tell you, I sat in, I didn't get to finish it, but I watched him go through some of this training, and it was pretty cool. That was very thorough, very thorough.
Stevie Frank. Mr. Frame is currently a student at Westminster College. He's one of two weapons students that are.
Are you both Vips and SIR?
Yes.
Just a couple other things tonight. As we're moving forward with the pro officer ordinance, I just wanted to get back on the same page with everybody and also advance the replacement officer. So I'd like to ask council to formally approve, as we advance this pro officer ordinance, to also authorize the police department to hire a full-time replacement officer who will serve in the stead of Sergeant Stewart as he moves forward into the pro officer position. Not sure how you want to do that, whether it be by consensus or if you want to get it on the agenda for next time after the second reading of the pro officer. That way you could just kind of segue one into the other. But I would just like to ask tonight if we could get formal approval for that so we can keep moving forward with that.
Why don't we do that right now? Council, how do you feel? Are you ready, prepared to have this placed on the agenda for next council meeting? If it's not on our agenda now, we really couldn't make that decision. We can make the decision to have it placed on the agenda for vote, for formality, but not, since it's not on the agenda tonight, we technically couldn't vote on it.
We had a general consensus that this is the direction we want to go, so I just think it's.
I make a motion, we put it on the agenda if you got to have that. All right, I got a motion, I got a second.
I'll second it.
All right, it'll be on the next agenda then.
Thank you all very much. One last thing to report on, we are moving forward a little slower than I'd like to with civil service. We did give our, and I say that because we gave our written test last night to seven individuals. We have to have three on the list. We only had two pass the test. Yeah. So we've had a little bit of a rope on. And so that means we're going to have to retest. It stretches it out just a little longer than what I would have liked. But the mayor and I have discussed this. We feel that with the timeline that we've come up with for civil service, we can still be within our guidelines of at least getting somebody into the academy by late spring. So that's where we're at with that. You know, we do have two that will go on the list. We only need one more. So surely to goodness, I can get one person to pass at least the test as we retest. So that's, we're moving forward with that. And that's all I have tonight. Yeah, the age requirements for municipal officers is between the age of 18 and 40. We've lost some really, yeah, you know, as you bring it up, we've really had to turn away some very good candidates because of age, unfortunately.
That is the rethought.
Yeah. Yeah, the sheriff's departments, the age cap for sheriff's departments in West Virginia is 45. So I never really understood the discrepancy, but it used to be 35 just a few years ago. It was raised up to 40.
But people live a lot longer today and a lot lower shape of years. Yeah, I know for 45-year-olds. I was going to suggest that Ray's daughter take the test. She just played at 36 on RACCT's.
I think it was Bridgeport or Morgantown as part of her home rule flanks, they changed the age up to 47, I think it was, the acceptable age. So in the home rule, if we're going to the next, we can't actually do that as a part of the home rule.
I have a question about what your Vips officers do. You say they do the business checks and everything like that?
Yeah, they just started into that. They've done it a couple times. It's something that's consistent yet, but we're hoping.
I've noticed that some of the other cities around in the area, Bridgeport, I believe is one, maybe Fairmont, I'm not sure, but they do a home vacation check. If you're going to be gone, call the office, and the officers will check at random times.
Yeah.
Do you do that, too?
Yeah, we do have, we do have house checks. That we do, we provide that service for a while. A lot of folks have called in, but we actually have that avenue through our website as well, BuchananPolice.com, there's a little link there for house checks. They can fill that out online, and that comes directly to my email. And then I disseminate it to the rest of the officers.
And don't tell people on Facebook that you're going on vacation.
No, my goodness, no.
I'll let them know you're going there.
I'll tell you what, it worked for me. When we left, my wife and I went on vacation, the teenagers had to stay home. They're all willing to stay at home. But I told them we were going to have house checks.
Yeah, yeah, there you go, that's good.
So I knew there would be no house party in my house. Certainly have house checks.
Any other questions for Chief Gregory? Comments? Chief, you're doing an amazing job. It was a great year. Let's have another great year, 2016. All right, Tom Lanison, Kelly Arnold, and Tim Rock of the Sewer Department will not be presenting tonight. There was nothing of any new significance to be discussing as close to the holidays. It's kind of like what we do on the last meeting. But that does not leave us without Mr. Scott McClure of GOPOOC, our city attorney. Mr. McClure, you're on the floor, sir.
Somebody told me this meeting was optional.
You're not here very often.
Just the one issue on the agenda, which is the Prevention Resource Officer with the Upstate County Board of Education. I think everybody's seen a copy of the agreement that we passed around. Not anything unique about that agreement. That is the form agreement throughout the state. It's available on the Department of Justice website, I believe. We forwarded this item to the chief and the Upstate County Board of Education. This morning, got a response back from Jody Akers, as she with the Board of Education. And she indicated to the chief and I that they would be reviewing this agreement and providing some thoughts and comments here shortly. So hopefully, prior to the next meeting, we will, and there's not much to it. We just got to plug in the numbers on the salary and the percentages that they will compensate us back for. And I believe, Chief, that you testified one, or mentioned one time, that's 85% approximately of the individual's salary, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so we'll be working on those numbers and the start date and the finish date for the resource officer. But once we get that information back, we will be in a position to, hopefully, simultaneously execute the agreement and, again, begin that important function at the elementary school. I think it's all handled. One issue's on the agenda tonight, it's an extension on the Sutton Link lease. This is about the second or third time. I know some people are probably losing some patience with that. I've had conversations with Representative Mr. Kellerman from Sutton Link in the past couple of weeks, told him my concerns on the head-end lease. So I think in relatively short order, we're going to be able to nail down the head-end lease and the easiness. and the easement on that one. And then hopefully shortly thereafter, in fairly short order, be able to get our franchise agreement in place. You all probably heard the discussion, this is a pretty common theme, there's not a ton of room for negotiation on these things frankly, because it's tough to get any other competitor into the market to provide competition. I haven't seen it anywhere and I think that's been the deal here as well. Very difficult to get any competition. Of course, with non-exclusive agreements anyway, but, so there's not a whole lot that we could do there, but we'll make sure that, I know one council member raised a concern about them operating outside of the confines of the franchise agreement or making improvements or doing things that weren't consistent with our agreement. And that's one thing we can make sure that we have full compliance with. If there needs to be permits pulled or notice given or infrastructure put back in the way that it was prior to being disturbed, then we'll make sure that we do that for sure. But that, again, that's later on the agenda. Just wanted to point out that I have spoken with a Sutton Link representative and I feel pretty confident that we will be moving forward pretty quickly.
I have a quick question for you. Now, as far as the agreement between Upstate County and the city of Buchanan, does that in any way affect our resolution or ordinance 400 on the prevention? Because down later in strategic, we're looking at the first reading of ordinance 400, which is our PRO officer. But if the agreement's not done that, does that affect the ordinance?
No, I mean, it's not, I mean, they're gonna be...
Well, two different animals, right?
Right.
The ordinance allowing us to be able to go into with them and you're just finishing up the agreement for.
Right.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
And they'll be pretty close in time together hopefully, but we can approve the ordinance authorizing that and then at some juncture attach the agreement. They won't necessarily have to go exactly simultaneously.
Okay. I have another question for you or something I really need to task you with.
Yes, sir.
As far as the pro officer and the hiring of a new officer.
Yes, sir.
We also need to start finishing up the part-time officer. I need you to take a look at finishing up that part of our home rule.
Okay, yes.
We can see that if there is a gap, for instance, in this commission and we don't have the candidates, there's gonna be a gap there. Well, we may not have an officer to replace Officer Stewart, which will put a real bind on the police department.
Yes, sir.
If we have this part-time there, at least we have a security blanket there that we can hire a part-time to fulfill that position.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'll get that moving forward. That's...
I appreciate that.
It's a little more unique project, as you know. It's not anything we can copy from any, but where else, when I lay it down paper for West Virginia, it'll be the first time, so we want to make sure that's accurate and...
I would think we just want to have that in place by probably end of February, just to make sure, because that'll be at least how long it's gonna take us to do the testing. And if we have failure at that point, not to have the three eligibles, or even if we refuse to hire any of those eligibles, then we've got somebody that can supplement the absence of Officer Stewart.
And first meeting in January in regard to the new police officer, obviously I think you've got to do, and I'll defer to Mr. Dalsa, budget resolution to make sure that money's earmarked for that purpose. Maybe from one line item to the other, it might already exist in the police department budget, I don't know.
Well, we're due up for a budget revision and the next budget revision, we'll put that in there. That'll certainly happen way before any officer even hits payroll.
Yeah, we usually have that in January, beginning of February anyway for the next six months.
And do you want me to prepare a resolution, a resolution of council authorizing the mayor to begin the process to hire a additional police officer?
Not yet. I just need the ordinance, the home rule ordinance.
I have a question concerning this too. What happens if we do not get a third applicant?
That's a very good question, we have to start all over again.
Yeah, I'd say that's the case. You have to start over and you don't get a third applicant and you don't get a third applicant, then we just keep going, or is there provision, someplace where you just go far enough and you can use the two applicants?
I've heard of just seven people taking a civil service exam, so it's pretty unique in itself that you got seven people testing, that's extremely low.
Yeah, well, it's about on par with what we've experienced with our applicant pool over the last few years. We started out with 21 applicants.
Right.
And it was weeded down to seven at the written test phase between background and the physical agility test. Weeded out 14. And that's fairly substantial, you figure that's 66%.
Well, I mean, this would be...
You're only forwarding up to 40?
This wouldn't be earth-shattering legal advice, but I think you comply with the law with the very best of your skill and judgment ability. When it becomes impossible, then it's simply impossible. So, I hope that we, yeah, I hope we don't get there where we cannot get one third person, but I believe people would understand if we went as far as we could and obeyed the rules as best we could. I mean, sometimes it might be an impossibility.
Well, there are emergency provisions for us to do, so one would be to call in somebody who's already a previous employee to do, like we've done that before when we could fill a vacancy. So, it's not unlike what the county's done with Virgil Miller, come in for a temporary amount of time. Who did we do that with?
Adam Gissi was with us.
Adam Gissi, yeah. So, we do have some, we do have some security blanket there, but if we have that part-time officer home rule, then we are definitely secure in the fact eventually we'll be able to, we're not gonna have any layover where we're gonna be desperate for man.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
All right.
And that's all I had. Any other questions or comments for Mr. McClure? No.
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. McClure.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
I deserve the right to question him later on in the chat.
Are you sitting down already? Again, yeah, that's all I get.
I don't have anything under correspondence, so we have our consent agenda in your packets, council. You will find the approval for the December 3 regular council meeting. You'll have the approval of the minutes for December 10 special city council meeting, approval of the building and wiring permits, approval of the payment of the bills, approval of the public notice call for the 2016 election, that's that time, approval for the 2016 holidays and approval of Captain James Kimball as the interim fire chief commencing December 27, 2015, ending March 31st, 2016. Before we vote on that, is there any points or any of the parts of the consent agenda you would like to pull out for consideration or discussion?
Mayor.
Ma'am.
Whatever you do, you probably should completely read the call or have me read the call so that that'll be out there.
Okay, we can do that, I can read it, not a problem. Why don't I go ahead and do that? I'll pull out the call for vote or call for election or 2016 election. I'll pull that out to strategic issues and I'll read here in a moment, because we still need to vote on that anyway. And is there anything else that you might want to pull out to discuss or not?
Captain James Kimball, it's a fine decision, but is there, we just put March 31 hoping that we'll have a chief by then, or do we put in there until a fire chief, permanent fire chief is hired?
There is an agreement that the mayor will hopefully sign, Mr. Kimball will sign that will outline that his tenure as the interim chief from December 27 to March 31. There's a provision within that agreement that understands that if we hire a chief prior to March 31 or if we need an extension, that that will be authorized by both the mayor and Mr. Kimball for any extensions or any, I guess, dissolvement prior to March 31.
Thank you. All right. All right, so I didn't entertain a motion then, so if we're not pulling anything out but E5, I didn't entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. All right, next thing we have on our strategic issues and discussion is the E5 from the consent agenda, approval of the public notice call for election, and I'm trying to find it here. I got it, you want me to read it for you, Mayor? No, I don't like to read these things. That's what I like to do. I don't get to read much. I get to put my Macaulay on. All right, general election for the city of Buchanan is called to be, is called to be held on the second Tuesday of May 2016 for the purpose of electing the following. A mayor for a four-year term, three council members at large for four, four-year terms. What, four, four, you have, for four, four, wow, 12 years.
Four-year term.
All right, I'll redo that. Three council members at large for four-year terms. One council member with an unexpired term at large for two-year term.
Yep.
The voting locations are as follows. Precinct 8, Buchanan Academy Elementary School. Precinct 9, the courthouse annex. Precinct 12, Fred Everly Technical Center. Precinct 14, the Buchanan Academy Elementary School. So, 8 and 14 are the same, okay? All voters must be registered and must vote in the particular precinct in which they are registered. Persons interested in filing for offers may begin on Monday, January 11, 2016, in the office of the city recorder at C.O. The last date for candidates to file for the office in person is Friday, January 29, 2016, at 4:30 PM. By U.S. mail must be postmarked by midnight Saturday, January 30 of 2016. The last date to withdraw from the election is Tuesday, February 16, 2016. Drawing for position on the ballot will take place on Tuesday, February 23, 2016, at 9:00 AM at the Upstate County Courthouse located in the county clerk's office at 40 West Main Street, Buchanan, West Virginia. Amber Lee Jenkins, Assistant City Recorder.
We might just point out that even though it's the primary election for the state in Canyon, this is our general election. This is, this is, takes a seat.
Real deal. They'll be, they'll be done at the same time, but this is our...
Yeah, no, this is just our one election, we don't have the whole three.
Okay.
All right, so I entertain a motion to approve the call for election on May 10, 2016.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Ambies, it's always been about a two-week timeline?
Yes.
Yeah, it doesn't change.
Also, I wanted to mention too, people still think we have wards and we do not have that. Want to clarify that?
Yes, well, at the beginning, the city was actually broken down into separate areas and they were called wards. I believe in the early, or the late 70s, early 80s, they dismissed the whole ward concept and now it's a general election for all the areas. So, there are no more wards of districts that you vote in. You just vote in general for your council members. It makes sense that back in the day, whenever you lived in that neighborhood and you represented your neighborhood is what you did. And that's how you advanced whatever you needed done on your street, kind of like what Mr. Pugh does.
Mayor, I have a, before you call, if you don't mind, I have a question for Amy on registration to vote.
Okay, well, we haven't even made the motion yet. I made a motion first.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
I got the motion. Do I get a second?
Second.
All right, now, go ahead.
Amy, when is the last date to register to vote?
I'm sorry, I have to look that up.
Okay. If we can get that, can we put it on our post on our website and also have it posted about the general election information and have it posted out of the main thing?
We will certainly get that out, yes. Because I do believe there's gonna be a lot of people...
And then maybe the, Mando and Channel 3, of course, they'll have it on there.
Might point out one thing about voting, if you are 17 years old and you will be 18 by the time the general election...
That's right, you can vote.
...rolls around, you may register to vote in the primary. However, you cannot vote on issues which elect in the primaries, such as the city election. You would not be eligible to vote for that, but you could vote on all the other issues.
Okey-doke.
Thank you. Former Clerk, Pugh. Thank you. I know where that came from.
All right, so I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion or comments on that?
Question.
All right, I got a call for a question from Mr. Pugh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. All right, moving on along, we have the second and final reading of ordinance 398, the International Property Maintenance Code as amended. We had our public hearing a moment ago, nobody, no objections or positives on that, so having heard that, Mr. McClure, would you like to say anything on the second and final reading of ordinance 398, International Property Maintenance Code?
Sure, just briefly, this is obviously the State Property Maintenance Code. It is a form, International Property Maintenance Code, it's part of the State Fire Code, it's one of 12 separate volumes. This being the only volume that can be adopted in isolation. You cannot pick and choose the other 11 volumes, but this one you can adopt by itself. Hopefully at some future date, if necessary, and we think it's proved to do so, we might be able to adopt the entire State Fire Code. I believe that Mr. Smith is now qualified to enforce the whole aspect of the State Fire Code, which is one issue, the State Fire Marshal wants to make sure that you have enforcement abilities, but he is perfectly capable and able to enforce this. And this is just the general property maintenance issues that we see and be obviously a very nice tool to require, help people take care of their properties, protect property values, protect the aesthetics of the neighborhood and of course, general health and safety concerns as well. So, good chapter, we got two copies right here with Ambie. One includes commentary which explains the various aspects, it's not a big chapter. The one, again, contains commentary with some analysis on the various things, and that was just strictly the International Property Maintenance Code. So, we've done our public hearing, this is the second reading and it's good to go, it's obviously a good tool for all municipalities who want to make sure that property owners keep their properties in good condition.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. So, upon maturity of ordinance 398, I would entertain a motion to approve on the second and final reading of ordinance 398, International Property Maintenance Code as amended.
Can I ask the question?
Can we get the motion and then we'll go into discussion of questions? I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Capari?
I must have missed the first reading of this ordinance. Where did you come up with the fees?
The fees?
Deciding on the fees.
Those fees actually presented to me by Mr. Smith and I think the building permit fees are the same fees that come from Clarksburg, West Virginia.
I think they're a little bit high for this area, so right now I'm not in favor for it.
Why do you think it's high?
I just think it's high because we want to, okay, say a $2 million project comes in here, they have to pay $30,000 for a permit. I think that's right.
Do you think they should continue to pay the $25 they've been paying?
No, no, I just think that this needs to be adjusted, these fees.
I think, you're right, they're high. I was discussing earlier with Tim back there, I believe, in other states, I'm familiar very much with Ohio, I worked all the counties in Ohio with their building permits and everything like that. The person that actually owns a property usually is not impacted by this because the contractor pays the building fees. Of course, he adds it on to their project, but anyone that's going to do a project $2 million or something like that, they're, they're usually gonna have the extra money to do with the building permit. And in other, other cities, other states, they're expected to pay a higher permit fee and that covers the cost of Mr. Smith going out and inspecting the property as it goes along. If you're doing a high-rise inspection as compared to a home inspection, there's way more work has to be done, hence it needs a higher fee. These fees are proposed to help pay for the salary of Mr. Smith or any other zoning people. I, I don't think they're outrageous. I think as you go on into it, you'll find that the contractors and most everybody else are not even going to be too much affected by it because they will pass it on and they'll know that's part of their contract price. And a contractor has to pay BNO too, right, Michael?
That's correct.
What, what do you think of the fees? And also, Scott, you've dealt with other municipalities. Do you think it's, they're appropriate fees or do you think we're, as Mrs. Capari said, that we should have an adjustment downward?
If I may, again, this was the sample that Mr. Smith was familiar with from Clarksburg. It seemed to be in the ballpark. I mean, me personally, there's so many different breakdowns on it, I would have thought maybe you picked a number and capped it somewhere. I'm not trying to second guess what they did in Clarksburg, but I mean, just, you know, every $1,000 for a long time seemed to be a little bit overkill. I mean, $25 is so archaic what you're doing now.
Yes, it was.
That that couldn't possibly cover Mr. Smith's time. And if there is a $2 million project, he's probably gonna be on the thing as much as he's doing anything else, I would suspect. Somebody would, but, so, they don't strike me as exceedingly out of the ordinary, but Buchanan, West Virginia has a $1 million threshold on BNO taxes, so you guys watch out for your people's money real good. So, maybe I can see how that concerns some people, definitely, but it's not beyond the realm of possibilities based on what I've seen. And I'm kind of like Councilman Pugh, most of these people who do business don't blink an eye on, they understand that's a sliding scale on projects and I don't think they would bat an eye, quite frankly. And I don't even know how many $2 million projects you have in Buchanan, I suspect not very many.
Well, hopefully.
Well, I think a good example, one would have been the Rite Aid. What Rite Aid or what.
Now, remember all the work that Rich had to do to get the Rite Aid in compliance with the zoning and to make sure the building was the appropriate. And he must have worked with them for a good eight months to get that done. So, it's, and that, in that type of, that size of a project or that expense of a project, they're expecting that and the work that has to be done to develop that whole project is actually worth...
Well, I'm just going by the size of this town. About, I get tired of comparing as to places that's four times as big as Buchanan. That's, that's my...
Sure, go ahead, Tim.
Mrs. Capari, on the size of this town, I don't think that means because we're small, we're poor. Because we're small, we're not clever. Because we're small, we're not, you know, just really well-done. And so that doesn't mean that we have to keep small fees because we're small. I want good-looking facilities coming in here that the companies can pay to be here and they're going to pay the right way to be here. Just small doesn't mean that we have to have small fees. You know, I think small, sometimes in some small areas, you pay 10 times the fees you do in a large area to be in a small area.
Add $1,000, you know, you lose that.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
If I may say something, I, I think y'all understand, a lot of times when the question comes to me and I give the answer, I have seen a lot of different ordinances and I've made a lot of them, so when I'm giving an example, it's just for a, for instance. You can take it for the value you attach to it. Hey, we'd like to know what are they paying other council people, other places? What are other people doing? Just so we can make our own judgments and see if we're in the ballpark. But certainly, if I ever say this is how they do in Beckley, West Virginia, that is not, you're not beholden to do it that way. Follow suit, you make your own independent judgments based on your own, your own experience here. But I mean, to me, it's always important, what are other people doing? How are they handling this issue?
Yeah, you have to compare and contrast.
And, and it's, and it's good so that you have a dearth of knowledge to make decisions. So never given by me to say, oh, you must do it this way because they're doing it this way in Martinsburg, never. It's just for your information so you can be as fully informed as possible to make an educated decision. So I just want to make, and I know you're not accusing me of saying that, I just want, that's the only reason I give it. This came from Clarksburg, for example, so, um, you can draw whatever similarities you want between the councils.
And if ever it does come to a point where we do find that this is a, a, a roadblock for any future development from a company, then we can always go back and amend it. So if we find that two companies come in and want to do a $4 million project, they're really scared off by this amount, um, and then another one does it, then we have a very good reason to go ahead and amend it. But at this point, um, I, I can't say for sure this was from Ridgeport. I'm thinking it was from another town, but...
Now, I think from Clarksburg's, while Vincent's talking, yes.
Um, so...
I would, I would ask Michael to make an observation too.
Michael, would you like to make an observation, sir?
I really don't, don't think these are terribly out of line. Yeah, they're, they're a little hot for Buchanan, but there, there really is a lot of work that goes into it, as the mayor alluded to, uh, in, in a project like this. I don't think, I don't think it's going to discourage someone who's wanting to come in and, and build a, a two-plus million dollar facility. Um, you know, they are going to get breaks with their contractors being, oh, $50,000, so, so money spent here is money saved there, I mean, in, in that sense. So, so there is a saving that, I, I don't see this. I mean, it, it could be something that maybe if it does become a hindrance, or if we have a company that's coming in here that, uh, is going to contribute maybe a significant capital investment, say $5, $10 million and bring, you know, 10, 15, 20 decent jobs in, you know, we, we do have the opportunity to go back and, and maybe we can provide like an incentive package or something like that too. So, so we have some flexibility, but, but certainly the, the discrepancy in the, what we're charging now is just not sufficient. But you do have to keep in mind, the contractors do, if they do come in and they just build that one $2 million facility, they're getting a $50,000 BNO contractors break right off the top. So I mean, uh, even if they're capped at $30,000, they're still getting a quote-unquote $20,000 savings, so. And, and again, there's always that flexibility, you know, we're not going to let jobs in business go. If we have to provide an incentive package or something, we could certainly go and visit them.
By making the, the fee large enough to help pay the expense of Mr. Smith, it also, by his being on-site, will keep the contractors from cutting corners in order to, uh, get the job done and, and maybe cutting safety factors up to, you know, make it safer for our citizens.
And this is something we need, we have needed, I thought.
We have, yes.
A housing enforcement or inspection officer or whatever you want to call it, we've needed this for a long, long time. And, um, we've had issues in the past because we have not had Vincent Smith to go out to do those inspections that needed to be done.
What I, what I'd like to know is what, okay, I'm looking down here, you're starting at 99, 99. Okay, what, what did we charge for, say, a $100,000 building before?
I think it's $25...
$2,000.
$2 per thousand.
$2 per thousand dollars, $10,000?
So now it, it's raised up to $1,200, right?
No, no, okay, so you're getting how much on a website?
It would be $1,200. From $25 to $1,200.
How, how long's it been $25?
We've been charged, no, we've been charging $2 per thousand for building permits.
So 100 times $2 would be $200. How long's it been that way, Amy?
I think that ordinance was all, all the...
How long?
The 1980s, I believe.
So 30 years?
Yeah, I, I'd say it's time that we increase our building permits fees to bring them up today.
I just feel it's a little bit...
The 80s, I keep hearing the 80s. Um, here's the thing, also, if, and I'll piggyback what Michael was saying as far as what, um, if we're looking at that level of a project, we also have the enterprise zone incentive. So we would be dropping off some real personal property as well, so there is that as part of, what could be a part of that, uh, package.
And is it applicable to all business segments or not-for-profit buildings?
What's...
I mean churches, government agencies?
The enterprise zone or the...
I like the building, uh, building permit.
Building is a bill.
I was coming to...
Building is a bill?
Building permits apply to everybody, even churches.
Religious groups.
Because we have to get a building permit to put a sign up.
Yeah, it's contractors doing the work.
That's right.
And he's got to do it in accordance with state codes and he's got to be compliant, so I think that's everybody.
I just want to make that clear because residents don't read these things. So it's applicable to everyone.
And frankly, just because an ordinance passed doesn't mean it's finished. Somebody wants to take a look at it, come back later and it's the consensus of council, they want to cap it at some other number to make sense amongst the people. Propose an amendment, call me and say, hey, Scott, I'd like to change it then. I'll prepare an amendment to the ordinance and bring it back, you all vet it and, and change it. I mean, it's, uh, you, you have a right and an obligation to use the amendment process to make sure this, a lot of this is kind of me and Vince. And it won't hurt my feelings, it won't hurt his if you disagree with us. So I mean, it's, uh, if you, if you want to change something or got an idea that something fits better here, then by all means, say, I move to amend and, and I will correct it and change it in accordance with the council's wishes and we'll bring it right back.
And I think that's something that, and I don't know, I would say personally that every, when I was, before I was even elected, when I was sitting out there, it seemed like we're, the council was always being told, well, once you've done the ordinance, that's the ordinance unless it were a really special reason to amend. And it's just not true. We can amend anything we want, anytime we want.
It couldn't be further from the tree. It is not Scott McClure or Vincent Smith, you're elected here to you people. If you're going to go do something illegal, I'll try to stop you from something illegal, but it's got to fit the social mores of Buchanan and nobody knows it better than they like the council.
And I always felt like maybe this council was constrained in fact, and once you've done it, done an ordinance, then that was set in stone and concrete. In a way, it is, but council can't always look back and chip away at that and replace it.
It was just too painful to hear the ordinance revved that many times, so.
I imagine that could be the case, you just, you had to read it word by word. All right, so any other questions or comments? Because I do have a motion, a motion and a second. All right, so I'll, yes, ma'am.
I agree with Pam. I think it's a huge increase. And I think you're going to ask some contractors really upset when they come in and...
You're really not.
Get their permit.
No, see, and I have to disagree because had there been any contractors that would have been disagreement with it, they would have been at the public hearing. And we've been talking about it, it's been going on two and a half, three months.
They probably didn't.
If they don't know about it, I mean, there's nothing we can do besides, I know they know about it. I have no doubt about that.
Did you have your hand up?
Oh, were you distracted?
No, we don't, sorry.
Oh, I just, I have a color of my eyes, so.
You just bought something.
All right, so in this case, then, I would, I would, um, I, I've got the motion, okay, let's, are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
No.
No.
All right, so I have two noes, but I do have it passed with Mary, Ron, and Dave. So the ayes were Robin and, um, Mrs. Simons and Mrs. Capari. Motion passes. Keep in mind, we can come back and change these as well.
Can I make a statement about Vincent Smith?
No.
Well, it's a, it's a real good statement.
Say it at the end of your conference.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. All right, now, we got the second reading of ordinance 399, authorizing approved the issuance of the City of Buchanan Water Revenue Bonds, Series 2016A. In the original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4 million for the purposes of financing the cost of design, acquisition and construction of additions, betterments, and improvements to the potable water system of the City of Buchanan. Capitalizing interest on the Series 2016A bonds, funding a reserve account for the Series 2016A bonds, and paying costs of issuance to the Series 2016A bonds. I entertain a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 399.
So move.
So I got a motion, I got a second. Uh, any discussion on that? Mr. McClure, I'm not going to let you read that one because I know it's upon maturity. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We now have first reading of ordinance 400, the Prevention Resource Officer. It is in your packets. Um, Mr. McClure, did you want to make any comments on this resolution? I mean, on this...
Yeah, this, this is an ordinance and again, I, I view this as an intergovernmental agreement under 811, um, for the Western Union Code. It requires intergovernmental agreements to be by ordinance. So again, this is our Prevention Resource Officer and this is an agreement and a contract we will have with them to place a police officer at the Academy Elementary School. And again, this is a, obviously, an ordinance requires two readings, uh, but basically authorizing the mayor to sign that contract with the Upstate County Board of Education.
All right, council, so you have upon you, um, the first reading of ordinance 400. I entertain a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 400, Prevention Resource Officer.
So move.
I got a motion, do I have a second by Mrs. Simons?
Yes.
Um, any discussion, questions?
Questions.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 2015-22 for the Six-Month Extension Franchise Agreement with Altice Communications, otherwise known as Sudden Lake. Mr. McClure, you have a question?
Yeah, this is just an extension of our franchise agreement that was initially expired December of 2014. Is that right, Michael?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, so this is a, another extension. I think this extension's going to go pretty quick because I've had conversations with Mr. McKellerman at Sudden Lake and, um, he understands our concerns on the head-in lease, which is part and parcel of the entire franchise agreement. But I think that's going to go pretty quickly. I think we're going to get a consensus there, have something for this council to pass. And then he and I will sit down with Mr. Dawson, with the mayor, whoever else wants to be involved, and, uh, get the franchise agreement in place. If there's any particular concerns, uh, obviously forward those to us and we'll handle them, but it's, uh, important that we get a long-term agreement in place and, and cease with the continuation of the current agreement. Um, that's about how I'll have on that issue, just would like to, and I, I, this is something that's kind of carried over from one city to the next and it needs to come to an end. And I want to make sure that we get that resolved because we just don't need it sloppy, keep doing extensions, so I want to get something in place that the council can vote on and, and...
I would certainly like to make this the very last extension. We're going to do it or we're not. And you've got it here to June 30th, 2016, that's how long it's extended out to?
Yes, I can imagine.
That is the final day. I mean, we're not going to do another extension in that case.
And, and remember, this is a three-reader, this, uh, when we approve franchise agreements, it takes three readings, but I, I, I literally think after the first of the year, it will fall into place and we'll have something in front of you in pretty short order. Excellent.
Well, Mr. McClure, you certainly have a lot more, uh, faith in this than, than I as a councilperson does, uh, having seen all these for two and a half years now, trying to get, uh, a lease agreement done with Sudden Lake. And Sudden Lake, uh, is a very fine company. They, they do a lot of good stuff for the people and, and, but coming from the time that we found out that we had, uh, the rights-of-way violations, we've had violations on cutting of the, the fence up at a secure area, we've been promised this, that, and everything else, uh, I, I would, uh, much more like to see this made into a 90-day extension and that's going to be it instead of six months, 90 days. And let us get it over with. Give them something to push on tomorrow and not start on 90 days.
Thank you for your opinion.
Thank you.
For listening to my, for your advice. All right, um, so we have Resolution 2015-22, Six-Month Extension Franchise Agreement with Altice. I have a motion to accept Resolution 2015-22.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All right, Ms. Amby, you may call the rule because it is a resolution.
He remembered.
Good job.
Yes, Council Simons, yes. Council Pugh?
No.
Council Capari?
Yes.
Council Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor?
You don't need me. All right, motion passes, resolution passes. All right, um, so we are, comments and announcements? That's why I remember the resolution, it's only been an hour. All right, we're going to start with, uh, we're going to start from the reverse this time and I know that that would be Mr. S.T., Thomas.
Really? Okay. Um, I have, I have a few comments.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, first of all, I hope that everybody has a wonderful Christmas and Hanukkah and New Years. And, uh, please be careful of scams out there. There are a lot of them now, this time of year, telemarketers, IRS, people that say they're IRS. Um, I have talked to probably between 20 and 25 people, residents, some employees since the last council meeting. I have also, uh, read Mr. Berkstrom's article, last editorial, December the 9th, several times. And, um, I'm known as a flip-flopper occasionally, but I hope I am because I give a lot of thinking to some of the ideas I've shared up here. Um, I want to back off my, uh, consideration for an increase to the city council members for several reasons. As, uh, Robin pointed out one time, um, I believe, you know, that Social Security is not being increased this year. It's frozen. As Brian pointed out in his article, there have been several fee increases in the last six, seven, eight months. The, the issue that I have even considered more about is we have a broken system. It's broken. So why just continue the way we've done for years and not really address, try to reform what's been done in the past? It, it's absurd to me, and I've said this several times, if we decide to go with an increase for the city council, the elected positions, that means every time we have a cycle of increases, there's two or three council members that do not participate in that increase. That doesn't make any sense to me. It's, in other words, if we say, okay, let's give an increase this time for the next cycle, cycle," Mrs. Alba would not be in consideration for that. It's a system that's broken, I think, and I think we should work with other municipalities and the municipal league to really talk to the state legislature to say, "Look, we don't think we should give ourselves increases or the election cycle, but let's work with a system that's different than what we currently have." You know, the county commissioners, they don't give themselves increases, they're told by the state legislature what their compensation will be. Maybe there ought to be a form where, format where we make a percentage of what the county commission makes, not anywhere close to them, but maybe 10% or 15%, what have you, but we have nothing to do with. I also think that the, we need to review the board positions. You know, the revenue-producing boards, my understanding, are compensated, whether you're there or not. I don't agree with that, I think if you're not at the board meeting, you shouldn't be compensated for it. I don't agree with the $200 a month, I think that's excessive. I also think there are a lot of other boards that people are asked to serve on that are not compensated. So, I'm backing off suggesting any increase for this next election cycle. I also think Mr. Berkstrom has some pretty thought-provoking ideas in his editorial, I've talked to him about a couple times, and I would ask the citizens, the residents of Buchanan to, you know, voice your opinions, write to the editor, or come to city council meeting, but as of right now, I'm backing off, making a suggestion that we can give consideration for an increase. I also think we ought to put on the webpage what everybody up here gets paid, either as a councilperson on an annual basis, or as a board member on an annual basis, and do the same duty quarter and year. I also think there needs a lot more research that needed to say, what do different Class Two, or Class Three, or Class One cities, what are the different compensation levels? What responsibility do they have as far as some of the cities outsource utilities or other types of services? So, there's a vast difference out there among the cities and municipalities or towns in the state. So, that's my position, and I, you know, as I said, I'm not encouraging that we give any further consideration to this, that's my opinion, anyway.
Thank you, Dan.
So, all have a safe New Years and Christmas, and thanks for the volunteer police officers, and all have a very safe holiday. I had a couple other things I want to say, I can't remember what they are now.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. Thomas, Mrs. Simons.
I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mrs. Simons, Mr. Pew.
Yes, sir, thank you. First of all, I want to make a comment about Vincent Smith.
Okay.
Not only does Vince go out and tell people how to keep their property up, and what they're, what they're doing, that they should be written up about, but again, on my good street of Barber Street up here this past week or so, he helped out a person who was in a contract dispute with his contractor, the contractor walked off the job after he'd been paid in full, wasn't doing the work, and Mr. Smith met with the contractor, and met with the contractor, and he is currently finishing up, or has finished up, that job for somebody on my street. So, it can work both ways for you, Vincent, but he's always doing what's right for the city and for the people, and I commend him for that, and one of my neighbors up there really likes him right now, so...
That's why he is employee of the week this week.
Yes. Good, 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 good. Scams for the FOP and everything. I have gotten phone calls from three different areas this past week, from three different FOP units, one in Morgantown, one in Charleston, and one I don't know where it is from. So, like my friend David over here says, be wary of what you get and who you give to. I'd much rather give to the shop at the cop program than to give to somebody where the police officer, their organization, may get 20% of what's given.
More than that.
And now, David, on your comment about raises, it doesn't make any difference to me, I thought we didn't get paid when I ran for the office, but I will tell you that we are not unique in the fact that there's always going to be a certain member of council that does not get a pay increase at the time, because having served in county government for 17 years, when they get raises, you cannot get a raise in the middle of your term, so a new county clerk getting elected, got more than the old county clerk, county commission-wise, where they're serving, and so they're on a tier of one, two, and three years, somebody's always getting left out on that until their term comes around to be re-elected.
But it's not applicable to the county commission.
It's not applicable. The state passes the law, says what that is, and even with, when certain county clerks and circle clerks got pay increases, there are always others that didn't. So, that's not, you know, we're not unusual in that, and it's always going to be that way, so I think in that particular case, your point for pay increases is invalid, and I'm not going to push it either, it doesn't make any difference to me, one way or the other. It would have been nice, knowing that we were going to help somebody that might be coming in and be getting a little bit more money, because $4,800 a year is not much. I just spent three days going over 29 applications for fire chief, and that's three days down here going over that, that's just one instance. Otherwise, Matt, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year's, be safe out there, hope Santa Claus gives you what you want, and not particularly what you deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Pew, Mrs. Capery.
I just wanted to thank Jerry Arnold and the street department for all the extra hard work they have done this year to help out with our new Christmas decorations downtown, which we have gotten a lot of compliments.
Yes.
Also, I want to add that our final event will be tomorrow night, we're having a dinner theater at the banquet room at Audrey's, you get a meal and a show. Mr. Mick Suter, he travels around the state, and he puts on one-man theatrical performances, and he's doing an evening of Stephen Foster, songs from Stephen Foster, and we'll be adding some Christmas to that. At the end of the show, we're having a drawing for a weekend at the Bed and Breakfast next door. Mrs. Sharbriger is on my Christmas committee, and she is doing that graciously. I'm just really thrilled that we're getting the amount of people involved that are coming up tomorrow, and this will be hopefully the first of a yearly event, and the money that we hopefully will make, a little money on it, will go toward Christmas decorations for starting again next year, to hopefully add a little bit every year. And I just want to wish everybody a blessed Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and just remember the reason for the season.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Capery, very well said. Ma'am?
Okay, I'm the councilperson assigned to the planning commission. I want to say kudos to our president of the planning commission, which is, oh my word, me and Lobster. Okay, but I want to say also special thanks to Vincent Smith and Jerry Arnold, who joined us at the meeting that we had, oh, not, it was not a meeting, it was a working session, because we're having several of these. Anyways, we're tasking mayor, as you know, the parking issues, not just downtown, but parking issues, period. Mr. Van Nostrum from, Van Nostrum...
Architect.
Architect, he came and shared with us and just demonstrated, because he's been doing a study of parking for a long time now.
Yes.
But he gave us his spiel, shemagen, and anyways, we have a very talented group of citizens, don't you think?
Yeah, I do.
We do, and we've...
Does that include you, Tim?
Yeah, that includes him, but they're, you know, we're dividing up in teams, and we're working, and we're talking, and I also want to say thank you to Mitch Tacey for doing that study, thank you, Ron Pew, for getting that and getting it to us. See, it's not just one person, it takes everybody together to make these things happen, and we are working on parking issues, and we can't wait till we can, later on, the first part of the year, give a update to the city with recommendations, and we hope the council's going to support us, because we're working hard at it.
I'd like to have my copy back. Thank you, Mrs. Alba, you guys have been doing a fine job, and we appreciate the leadership of yourself, and this is going to say. And...
Mr. Reese.
All right, I have a couple of things, I want to thank all the churches that participated in the Christmas tree gathering downtown at Jawbone Park, I think we had eight total Christmas trees down there, it's a beautiful thing to see, and I have to say, there has been no vandalism, there has been, there you have a tree that just can't stand upright, but that's not due to vandalism, so I want to thank them, and I also want to thank the hard work of the Christmas committee, and I know Amanda's a part of that as well, and Pam, and Maria's participated in that as well, as I recall, no? You guys did a great job, and after what we heard last year, after what we heard last year, and the plea from the chief as well, you took it upon yourself to see that the leadership was there, as you did with the Fourth of July, I certainly appreciate, the citizens appreciate it, because I cannot wait for the snow to see how those lights will be.
Me, too. I've been getting phone calls at home about the lights. I just want to add something, too, please.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I forgot to mention, we have decided to sell tickets at the door tomorrow night.
Oh.
So, we do have, probably seating for another 25 people.
Excellent.
What's the dinner?
You get a choice of ham dinner or a baked steak dinner.
There you go. All right, so we have the VIPS, I want to thank all the VIPS for this whole year, they've done a great job since they've done it. I can't believe 1,237 hours total, that saves us $18,000, and I know they're helping with the vandalism and the safety downtown.
Yep.
As ambassadors, that's awesome. Mr. Doss, I need a form. Counsel, I'm going to task Mr. Doss with the form, and it's something David brought up. As we look at our budget revisions, we know we're going to have organizations coming to us now, wanting to know if they can, we can continue funding or do funding. I want a form, an application form, for organizations to fill out up at the front, and then once, if they fulfill out the application, and the application is doable, or should be progressed forward, then the detailed form of what the funding is for and how it's going to be spent. I'm going to ask Michael, task Michael to do that to bring to the next council, and I'd like council to take a look at it, and I want to use that as our formal way of making sure that funding is done appropriately, as opposed to just coming up and asking for money and first come, first served, okay? I may even think about a committee, depending upon how many different organizations ask, because we only have a limited amount of money that we can spend, it may have to be a committee to do that. Also, I do want to, I do want to address in the editorial by Mr. Berkstrom, the one that Mr. Pew and Mr. Thomas were mentioned in, but so was the city recorder, I have to wholeheartedly disagree with Mr. Berkstrom as far as what the responsibilities of the recorder are. Obviously, he doesn't know what they are. No city council member, except for Mary Alba, who is previously a city recorder, can understand that, I do believe that the city recorder needs a pay raise, I do not believe the mayor does. I think that when the city recorder has to go to every board meeting, every commission meeting, every planning commission meeting, they have to go to every committee meeting, they have to record it all for the citizens, that's a very important thing that has to be done, and we can audit it. If we don't have that paperwork right, or if any of our orders is arg done right, or if we don't have it fulfilled according to state code, guess who that comes back on? Comes back on the recorder. I wholeheartedly disagree that Mr. Thomas could do the job of a recorder, I have every reason to believe Mr. Pew cannot do the job of a recorder, and I do not appreciate somebody who does not know what the job of a recorder is, say anything about it. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I cannot wait for 2016 to come out. We are now adjourned.